All right. Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome our citizens and city council this evening, and I'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM for February 20th, 2024, West Richardson City Council Meeting. Before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie to read the hybrid ground rules and then call the roll this evening.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right-clicking on your video view and selecting Rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on Participants and then click on Raise Hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit your comments to three minutes. All right, roll call. Brent Gary?
Here.
Richard Bloom?
Here.
Red Brink?
Here.
David Fettow?
Here.
May Hayes?
Here.
Kate Moran?
Present.
John Smart?
Here.
Ken Stoker?
Here.
Councilmember Moran, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Moran. With that, council, the agenda is before you. Councilman Smarts asked to remove Item 6D, Resolution 1024, authorizing an interlocal agreement with Visit Tri-Cities for the Ironman event, move it to the regular agenda. So we'll make it Item 8F and then move the budget amendment to 8G since that resolution affects the budget amendment, the Ironman one affects the budget amendment. So we got to get it taken care of first. Are there any other changes to the agenda this evening, council? Hearing none. They have a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, council. Presentation this evening, we have Shannon Olson and Troy Burgland with Benton REA, and they're here to present the check with it, to present a check for the ownership money that we have earned over this last year. Thank you, Troy.
Right, yeah. First of all, thanks for having us, Troy Burgland. Know all of you from Benton REA, Shannon Olson here, which you all know, I'm sure. And so, a couple of things before I get to the ownership check presentation. I wanted to give you guys an update while I'm here on the new building that we're building out in West Richardson by the Raceway. And so, we're still in the design phase. As you well know, about six months to a year ago, we had a, we were going to do a phased approach, do initial phase and admin building, then Phase Two a few years later would be the operations center laydown yard. So we're doing that all in one phase now. And so we will be submitting plans this summer. Construction beginning towards the end of this year, happening through '25, move in the end of '25, at the latest first part of '26, most likely end of '25, and we'll have, you know, that'll be our main office with the full laydown yard. So most of our material will be delivered there. So seeing some good plans being developed. So we're excited about that, and things are progressing very well with that project. So.
We look forward to the groundbreaking ceremony where we can come, all come out and then get some gold shovels and throw some dirt in the air.
I am sure we will have that fully planned and be communicating with your guys on it.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah, good. And then the other thing was just kind of just a comment on our collaboration. And we had one recently in your staff, probably you guys probably updated the city council. We went Olympia. Benton REA goes there every year, usually multiple times a year on legislative issues. And this year, we've, for the last several years, we've been doing some joint meetings with the city of West Richardson, and this year was no exception. So as my boss calls it, it was a marathon of meetings. So Benton REA's service area touches five different districts. So we had 14 meetings with legislators in about a day and a morning. And but I'd say nine or 10 of them were jointly with Roscoe and the mayor and the city of West Richardson. So it's just a key element of our partnership to be able to go jointly. I know from the legislative perspective, they always appreciate it when community members come together and speak with one voice about an issue or a couple important issues. So really appreciate that partnership. And then on a side note, I think our partnership, obviously Roscoe talks about this a lot and stuff, but goes well beyond legislative matters, regulatory matters. And we just had a meet, I say we, Shannon and Eric Mendenhall and our, one of our, our engineering managers had a meeting jointly, and it was just about planning for the future, right? What's coming? Because, you know, we're trying to, we plan not months in advance, but years, sometimes decade in advance, just like you guys do. You have to really plan far out in the future to build the system and infrastructure that's needed to take care of our citizens and have the quality of life that they need. And, and so I know Nick, our engineering manager, made a comment towards the end of, man, I wish all of our partners, we could enjoy this type of relationship with all of our partners. And so, just a big thank you to Eric, Roscoe, all of your city staff who's just really gracious with their time to work for us from a planning perspective. So it's, I can't tell you how much that means to us as an organization. So thank you for that.
Well, we certainly appreciate the partnership that the REA has with the city of West Richardson, obviously with the sharing of your lobbyist, Pat Dunn and Jennifer, very key to our success, both of Benton REA as well as the city of West Richardson. So, you know, shortly, hopefully, we're going to have some good news to share with, with council. We'll just kind of leave it at that now. I'll let Roscoe talk to it a little bit later. But again, on the legislative side of it, when they see REA and the city of West Richardson come in, the only thing I see on their faces, oh, God, they're going to be here twice as long. You get 15 minutes for us and 15 for them, but we get a lot done. And the cooperation that we have and the partnership with our legislators, both the eighth and the 16th, we don't let anybody get away from us. Just because we're on the line and they change boundaries, we make sure that everybody on the, on the east or on the east side of the state work together because it's so important that all of the legislators and all of the counties and communities and cities really, really make a presence in Olympia because we are the unsung people over on this side of the, of the, of the state. And we need to be, be strong and present. So it really does help. So thank Jennifer and Pat for everything they do for us. It's certainly appreciated.
Thank you for those comments, mayor. And so, yeah, and with that, so I guess the reason why we're here is so as a co-op, we are owned by our members. So your citizens, you guys are members of the co-op. And so, one, there's several different ways which that ownership was reflected, but probably the easiest, most tangible is, is our ownership credits. And so, any margins that we have, you know, as a nonprofit member-owned co-op, we're the only form of utility that actually pays our margins back to our members. And we allocate them. It takes several years, but eventually pay them back to the membership. And so, that's something we're very proud of. And so, this year, I know the city, it took us a while to coordinate attending a council meeting. I apologize for my schedule on that one. But so you guys have already deposited and I think spent the money on a meal up in, up in Coeur d'Alene. I believe, I'm just joking, man. So but anyway, so seven, little over $7,000 was a check to the city of West Richardson in ownership credit. So just our appreciation again for you.
I'm going to ask council if they'd all huddle right around this front area here, Troy. I'm going to come out. We're going to get a photo op so you can, you can throw that out in the REA.
Yeah, whatever else. Yep.
For people in front.
If you just say, help them in the way.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
They locked, they locked in.
Take it from this side and not have them podium in the way properly.
And they should definitely not be in the back. They're all great. Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Have a good evening.
So does that check keep going up every year, Aaron?
It goes up and down. Awesome. Okay. All right, council, the consent agenda is before this evening,
which includes payment of the bills, approve the minutes of the regular meeting, January 16th, 2024, Resolution 0924, resolution to set a public hearing for vacation 001-2024, Resolution 1124, setting public hearing date to consider a petition for frontage improvement waiver in Kennedy Road, Resolution 1224, setting a public hearing date to consider a petition for frontage improvement waiver, South 50th Avenue, and a motion to award South 38th Avenue roadway reconstruction project, a motion to authorize the mayor to execute Amendment Number One to un-call engineering services contract with JUB, motion to authorize staff to submit TIB complete street project grant applications, and a motion to confirm planning commission appointment. If there's anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to the consent agenda this evening, you can come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Let me put your comments to three minutes. I see no one in house. Anybody virtually would like to address the, make comments to the consented agenda this evening, raise your virtual hand or star nine if you're by phone, be recognized. I see no one virtually this evening with their hand up or a star nine by phone. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
With that, council may have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, council. And this is the first citizen public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to provide comments to council, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. I remind you that there's no response or questions during this, that there'll be back and forth from the council to the person at the podium. Is anyone locally here in house like to comment? Come to podium, state your name and address, sir.
Anne Ritchie, 508 Austin Drive. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I was pleasantly surprised here recently to have gotten the survey, upcoming city survey. So it's being, the public is being notified that it's, it's up and coming. But with that, then come a whole host of, of challenges that are going to go with that because surveys are dangerous things. And we know how you can manipulate and manage data to basically massage it into anything you really want it to look like. And so my hope is that we will see some real clear-cut criteria written down and approved by somebody that tells us exactly what's going to be done and how it's going to be done. Because we haven't seen that in the past, and I believe that's what created a lot of the confusion that we've already talked to several times before. And so there's, I've got numerous questions, and I'd be glad to present those to you. Couple other things that go with that then. And I'll share that with you too, Eric. Couple other things. One of the things that we've have talked about is we took a look at what the impact of a marijuana shop was and what the lease calls were out to the Arena Road shop. And what I've come to find, as I've done my research here, is that it's not the location that experiences the challenges. It is the bubble that is around the location. And so it is really not the Arena Road pot shop you want to look at, but you want to look at that in proximity to that, that pot shop. And I found there's a lot of really very interesting data on that. Very, very interesting. And then the last thing is that, that I'll bring up is that there's really, it depends on how you boil the numbers because it, we've, we've got some very optimistic numbers in the presentation, the package that came to council for review and approval, and some very optimistic numbers on what revenue is going to look like. And basically, we actually can take a pretty solid guess with the fact that what you have is Nirvana divided by three. And that's not what we've done. And so with that, we, we've seen some, like I say, some pretty inflated numbers, and I would challenge those. And with that, thank you.
One else in the audience like to speak this evening for items not on the agenda? I see no one else rising in the audience. Virtually star nine or virtual hand to be recognized for items not on the agenda? I do not see anyone virtually with a star nine or hand up. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
Move on to ordinances, resolutions, motions, and public hearings. Item 8A is a public hearing and a first reading of an ordinance to approve a new 10-year fine, franchise agreement with Cascade Natural Gas. With that, I'll ask Public Works Director Roscoe Slade to present his staff report this evening. Mr. Slade?
Thank you, mayor. So council, what, tonight with franchise agreements, we go through a first reading of the ordinance, and then it'll come back at a future meeting for actual adoption. So tonight is just a first reading of it, going through it, and allowing for public comments. Cascade Natural Gas was originally granted a franchise agreement in the city of West Richardson back in 2003. That was a 10-year term that had 10-year renewals. And so this was last renewed in 2013. If you recall, we've passed a couple ordinances that extended the term of the franchise. There's been two extensions of 90 days to allow some additional time to go through and update some of the language. For the most part, the franchise agreement that's before you is very similar. As far as the term, the term is still 10 years. But we're looking at after this next year, 10-year term, to look at five-year automatic renewals with the opportunity for either party to negotiate any kind of change or updates. The big changes are the ones that really were a focus is Section 13 and 14. This deals with indemnification and insurance. So these were all updated. So we use WCIA's recommendation, which is our risk pool, insurance risk pool, and our city attorney going through the language of the franchise to make it current. And so that took a little time. Cascade Natural Gas is local for us, but there also have people across the US that have to review this. So I'm not going to go through all of it, but those were the big changes with it. And at that, I'll just leave it for any questions or public comments.
Thank you, Roscoe. Appreciate it. With that, I'll open the public hearing at 6:18. If anybody in the audience who'd like to make comment on this item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I see no one in house. Virtually, if you would like to make comment on this agenda item, please raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone to be recognized. Stephanie, I do not see anybody virtually. Do you?
I do not.
At, I will close the public hearing at 6:18. And see, since this is a first reading, there, there's no, no action tonight, but the questions that council may have can certainly be discussed. Councilman Bloom?
I guess the, down to is, what would be the alternative? I mean, I mean, is they're going to pull up their pipes?
Yeah, the franchise agreement I should explain is allows a public or private utility to utilize the city's public right-ofways and city utility easements to provide service. So in this case, the city doesn't provide natural gas. So this allows Cascade Natural Gas to come in, use those things under these terms and conditions to provide that service to our residents. So really not an option not to, it's just putting conditions on it to make sure that both parties are covered.
Well, putting my futuristic hat on, this would not preclude a hydrogen gas supplier to put in a similar system, correct?
Yeah, this is not exclusive. So any other kind of franchise could come in.
Council, any other questions to Roscoe on this? Okay, so we'll bring this back to you for a second reading and adoption at our next regular meeting. With that, we're moving on to Items 8B and C, or a public hearing and a resolution to approve a frontage improvement waiver for a property of South 40th Avenue. Again, Public Works Director, Mr. Slade, present your staff reports evening.
Thank you, mayor. So what you have before you, council, is a petition to, for a frontage waiver for the property at 678 South 40th Avenue. It's a property that is, has a pending short plat. And per our code, it requires frontage improvements to South 40th Avenue with the short plat. The property owners petitioned to waive those. I think the letter was at the, sometime in mid-December, we received it. There's no existing furniture improvements on that section of South 40th. This is south of Van Geest and the old downtown area. Council set up a public hearing when they adopted Resolution 324, setting tonight as the public hearing. Staff has reviewed this. And again, we seem to have a lot of these, so I'm not going to read it verbatim, but council can deny, approve, or approve with conditions. Staff is recommending to approve the frontage improvement waiver conditioned on the property owner waiving their rights to future LID for these improvements, and also the property owner dedicating to the city five feet of right-ofway and a 10-foot, excuse me, 12-foot utilities along the frontage of this short plat.
That, I will go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:21. If anybody'd like to speak to this agenda item in the audience, come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to make comments. I see no one in house jumping up. Virtually star nine or raise your virtual hand to make comment on this agenda item this evening? I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
And I'll close the public hearing at 6:22. Resolution 1324, roadway frontage improvement waiver for South 40th Avenue, address 678 South 40th Avenue. Do you have a motion, council?
I move to pass Resolution 13-24, granting a frontage improvement waiver for frontage improvements to a portion of South 40th Avenue with conditions as noted.
Second.
Motion in a second. Council, is there any other questions you might have that weren't answered from Roscoe's staff report? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, council. Items 8D and 8E are a closed record hearing and an ordinance to approve a rezone application to change a parcel in Section 8 of Lamont Heights from residential medium RM10 to residential medium RM6. Since this is a closed record hearing, I'll ask our city attorney, Jessica Foltz, to read through the hearing guidelines, and then we'll hear from our community development director, Eric Mendenhall, with his staff report. Jessica?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A public body's decision on a quasi judicial matter has to be based on and supported by the record in that matter. The record consists of all testimony or comment presented at the public hearing and all documents or exhibits that have been submitted in connection with the matter being considered. Only parties of record will be allowed to provide comments, and no new information or documentation can be introduced. The purpose of this closed record hearing is for the city council to consider the pertinent facts, applicable law, and to make a final decision on rezone application RZNE-0001-2023-HabitatForHumanity. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies to this hearing. That document requires that this hearing be fair in form, substance, and appearance. The hearing must not only be fair, it also must appear to be fair. Because of that, at this time, I would ask council a few questions. First, has any member of the council engaged in communication with opponents or proponents regarding this issue outside of the public hearing process?
No.
No.
Will any member of the council obtain any financial benefit or suffer a financial loss as a result of the outcome of this hearing?
No.
No.
Is there any member of the council who believes that he or she cannot hear and consider this application in a fair and objective manner?
No.
No.
And is there any member of the public, either proponent or opponent of this matter, who objects to the participation of any of the council members in hearing this matter? I don't, I do not see any response. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate that. And are there any parties of record in the audience this evening or virtually who would like to make comment to this agenda item? See no one.
Would you like me to do the presentation first, mayor?
Pardon me?
You want me to do the presentation first?
Thought you were done.
Okay, Eric, sorry. No, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The proposal is to rezone, as mayor has stated, parcel number 108983020182000, which is Lot 182, a two-and-a-half acre lot in Section 8 of Lamont Heights subdivision, from residential medium 10 to residential medium 6 or RM10 to RM6, to allow for a townhome development for Habitat for Humanity. The property in question is vacant with a multifamily development to the west, vacant land to the north and east, and the city's bombing range sports complex to the south. The property's comprehensive plan designation is medium density residential, which allows for both RM10 and RM6 zoning designations. Examples of the existing and proposed zoning is shown on pages 13 and 14 of the staff report respectively. The proposal is a site-specific rezone and is a Type 4 application. The proposal held a open public hearing before the planning commission on January 11th, 2024. The public notice was mailed out to property owners within 600 feet on December 13th, 2023. The site was posted with a public notice sign on December 13th, 2023. At the open public hearing, public comment was provided, and a recommendation from the planning commission was made and unanimously passed to recommend council approve the proposed site-specific rezone. Public comments at the hearing included concerns about increased traffic at Mount Adams Drive and Bombing Range Road intersection, concern with property maintenance, size of development, form and substance of the development, and property values. Most public comments were residents from the multifamily small lot development abutting the property to the west. The traffic at Mount Adams Drive and Bombing Range Road is being monitored by Public Works. A signal for that intersection is included as part of the six-year transportation improvement plan, but has not yet met warrants for engineering standards. The new development would be required to pay their fair share towards capital improvements per city codes. Staff has reviewed the proposed site-specific rezone and finds it is compliant with the city's comprehensive plan as described in the staff report. The proposed rezone will provide a much-needed missing middle housing stock, and both city staff and the planning commission recommend city council approve the proposed rezone.
Thank you, Eric. My apologies for leaving you out there. So with that, again, anybody, parties of record who'd like to comment on this agenda item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. All right, very good. Let's see, with that, I see nobody in house, and then virtually star nine or virtual hand up to make comment on this agenda item? I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
That Resolution 07-24, ordinance 03-24, rezone for Habitat for Humanity council, do I have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 03-24, approving file number RZNE-0001-2023 to rezone parcel number 1-0898-302-0182-000, from residential medium RM10 to residential medium RM6, based upon the recommendations of the planning commission and conclusions and findings contained within the staff report.
Second.
Second. Counsel, are there any questions that you'd like to ask over Eric that weren't answered in his staff report this evening? Councilmember Bloom?
Yes, my question really goes to Roscoe. With this going in, would that change the status of putting in? Yes, my question really goes to Roscoe. With this going in, would that change the status of putting in the thirty-eighth of the Mount Adams View and bombing-range intersection light? Or roundabout?
You never know these days. Yeah, the, the traffic that was predicted when we extended thirty-eighth up to bombing range in Mount Adams View, we're not seeing the traffic that was projected. So this, I don't know how many units off the top of my head, is it going to put it over the, the thing? But we did put it on our six-year transportation improvement plan to continue to monitor. But this development itself isn't going to put that intersection so that it meets warrants.
Battle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of questions, one for Jet. So on here, it talked about enough supply for two-to-three-year demand. Is this going to be a construction zone for three years, or how are you going to manage building to townhouses to applicants? Is it just be a constant state of construction, or is it going to be kind of phased out, or are you guys looking at managing that?
Name and address, please, for the record.
I'm Jet Richardson. My address is twenty twenty-one Fairway Court, Richland. And our offices, our administrative offices are also in Richland.
The Habitat for Humanity.
For Humanity, yes, Habitat for Humanity. Excuse my voice, I'm coming off very cold. We hope that this would not be a two-year, three-year-long construction project. We typically build between eight and ten homes a year. But because these would be townhome developments means we can't move a family in until both sides are completed, which means we would have to build just as quickly. It would be nobody's interest for it to be a lingering construction site, certainly not for any of the families that we support.
And then, so I've participated in, in, I think now, four builds, three with Hayden Homes and one in Spokane in just September, I think it was. So, so I'm familiar with Habitat. I'm, I'm really comfortable with what you guys are looking to do. I'm assuming whoever made the comment about druggies and criminals understand what Habitat does. This isn't Section eight housing. Of the, was it one hundred and twenty-nine to date in the Tri-Cities? One hundred and sixty, how many of those homes have been given back to Habitat? Zero.
We have right of first refusal, but we've had no foreclosures.
Thank you very much. That's what I was looking for. And then, Roscoe, it's Champions Drive, isn't that what's going back to this? Is that going to be, are we looking at widening that during soccer time? It's hard enough to get one car passing through there because people park on both sides, even though they're not supposed to. Are we looking at widening that for the increased traffic?
That will be part of the frontage improvement, as you'll decide. So what's there now is the old bombing-range road. We ground up and just put it there as a temporary for a driveway to the back of the sports complex. So that will be part of the, when the building permit comes in for this, we'll be looking at frontage improvement on Champion Drive there, off of Mount Adams View.
And that is Champions, right? Do I remember that? Yeah. Okay, so I'm assuming when we see, later on, we'll see that piece come through as far as the...
You shouldn't see it. If they're going to go build those improvements, furniture improvements with their development, you won't see it come to council.
Gotcha, okay. Nope, that was it. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. I was going to ask similarly about the road, but then I guess I will ask, are we, have we already seen any action moving forward in the section to the north? I'm curious if there's going to be a, a road that would go from Mount Adams to the middle of that, kind of like how Fresian is doing to the lot, to the... I can't remember which direction that is. West.
The local roadway plan that's been adopted by council for Section eight shows a future planned city street where Champion is. Not through the middle of lots, but that doesn't say that it can be amended by council, but right now, the road plan is where Champion is shown.
Okay, and is it supposed to also connect to the road that's going east and west through the section to the west of it? No, it's blocked off?
That's, yeah, they're not planning on connecting that road. That's a private road that's in there. That's their fire truck turnaround hammerhead that they've built. There's no intention to connect those. That is a private neighborhood. I think they even have a gate. That's a gated neighborhood.
Okay, I'm just curious about fire going in and out of this neighborhood is my concern, firing in emergency services in general going in and out of there, just making sure we're covering our bases for that.
Absolutely. There's some regulations that we make sure they comply with when they come in with their circulation plan for their development that will make sure there's plenty of room for a fire truck to get to this site and serve it and get back out without the wheels falling off.
Thank you.
Done, Council then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, and thank you for the Habitat for Humanity and all that you do for our region locally. Much appreciated. With that, items eight F is a resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement with Visit Tri-Cities for the Ironman event in September. As mentioned, Councilmember Smart has asked to pull this item from the consent agenda. So what we will do is I will ask for a motion in a second, then we'll go into discussion. I'll start with John, and then to give opportunity for anybody in-house or virtually to make comment on this agenda item. So Council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to pass Resolution ten twenty-four, authorizing the mayor to execute the attached interlocal agreement regarding Ironman seven, seven point, seventy-point-three Washington Tri-Cities twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six with Visit Tri-Cities.
Second.
Second. I just wanted to touch base a little bit before I turn it over to, to John, that this is something that has been worked quite in-depth with staff, with Eric, Roscoe, Jaclyn, Stephanie, Commander Coach, the Chief. Visit Tri-Cities, it, it is something that is, is really, really taking a look at, worked real hard to make sure that this was a beneficial project for both the city and the community. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to John for the questions you might have. And I, I know that Ken also sent me questions in regards to maybe moving this off the consent agenda, so we can move to Councilmember Stoker next. So, Councilmember Smart, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, the reason I took this off was so that we could have a discussion about the cost of this event and the return on investment. You know, in my simple calculation, I see forty-five-hundred or five-thousand rooftops in West Richland. This is asking for a twenty-five-thousand-dollar payment per year for three years. That's like me going to everybody's door and asking them if they'd like to buy a ticket to the Ironman contest for three years running, and by the way, you don't have a choice. So, given that construct, I have to ask, is this really what West Richland needs or wants to do? And I have an open mind on this, but I, I couldn't see the the exact benefit if I were Richland and had hotels and big box stores and grocery stores and all sorts of restaurants and so forth, why, I can see where they will benefit probably tremendously. Here, unfortunately, I don't know that we have enough business to develop enough taxes right away. So I was going to give Eric an opportunity to maybe enlighten us on the aspects of future benefits. And in that, I will say I have an open mind, but, but I will say that it's, it's, it's a lot of money. And I did learn from Eric just before the meeting that there, there are ways out, which I'm encouraged to hear. So maybe you could expand on that for us as well. So that's my question.
We, besides Eric and Roscoe, we also have Kevin from Visit Tri-Cities, so if there's any answers, or statistics or information that you might be able to enlighten Councilmember Smart on, I will, I will offer your opportunity to speak as well. With that, we'll go ahead and start with comments from Eric, Roscoe, and Kevin for Councilmember Smart, and then we'll move to Councilmember Stoker.
So this evening, I'll be going over kind of the economic impact associated with this event and what it means for the city of West Richland. Roscoe will go over some of the, the numbers and details of the, of the contract, and then I'll let Kevin, if he wants to step up to the microphone after Roscoe's done, answer any thing that maybe I left off or, or that Roscoe's left off. So I did reach out to Kevin, and he gave me some fantastic information about Ironman, and this isn't his first rodeo. I know that he's done this for the city of St. George before coming here, and he's seen some pretty significant improvements to that community based upon this, and I'll let him go into those details. But current registration includes athletes from forty-eight states and nine countries, twenty-five-hundred athletes in total. Though they're, they're experienced at these events, about seventy-five-hundred visitors and a thousand volunteers. This provides positive exposure to people all around the world. We'll learn about and experience West Richland firsthand. Those are going to be provided us with some street cred out there as we go out and try to create some opportunities in economic development world, being able to say that this is something that we have in our community. West Richland identified, we are a key partner in this. Our name is going to be on the press releases, social media, newsletters, and websites that are going out across the world. West Richland is also connected to the world's most recognized and embraced endurance brands. So Ironman is not something that you just hear here in the state of Washington, but you hear about it all across the world as it is a worldwide event. And as these events come in, it's going to showcase our community. We're going to be able to showcase everything about our community that we love. As we do that, people from nine countries and forty-eight states will be able to experience that as well as they come and support or run in the race, or not run, they do more than just run, but, but as they experience the race, they're going to be able to experience West Richland and everything that we offer. As that happens, the economic development comes back to us. And while you're right, Mr. Smart, Richland and Kennewick and Pasco have the hotels, this puts us on the map for the next hotel, I believe, as we have other events that are here in our community with the racetrack, and as we're working towards other similar events coming into our community, that will drive hoteliers and restaurants to want to locate here in the city of West Richland. It's estimated that there will be eight million dollars in economic impact in the Tri-Cities during the race week. Let me say that again, eight million dollars in economic impact in the Tri-Cities during the race week. Visitors spend nearly six hundred million in the Tri-Cities each year, so you can kind of see that this is going to add quite a bit to, to that. And visitor spending creates fifty-seven-hundred jobs in the area and generates more than seventy-four million in local tax revenue. And I'll let Kevin go into that a little bit more and explain that. So I see this as a great opportunity for the city of West Richland to get some exposure to hoteliers and restaurants and, and the like, to be able to show what our brand is as a city and what brings people back here and want to be here in our community. So I see it as a great opportunity for us.
So I'll talk a little bit about the expenditure that's in there, the financial impact. So you see twenty-five thousand. Ten thousand is what we're going to end up cutting a check for, paying for things. The fifteen thousand is in-kind services. It's an estimate for exempt staff, the time that they will put into working with Visit Tri-Cities, Ironman, to put on the event. So some of those include attending meetings, planning, reviewing traffic control plans, helping with them to obtain permits from the state to use that portion of Van Geesten. So which you see is, is, out of the twenty-five thousand, ten thousand is really what it's going to cost us, and that's the overtime on the day of the event. Or we've agreed to, in this agreement, I think it's for maintenance employees, one the day before the event, and then we've also got three officers and a sergeant that we're committing to. And so that's overtime. That's where that ten thousand comes through. That's actually an additional cost. The other fifteen, again, is a lot of exempt employees. A lot of them are attending meetings virtually during the work hour, so there's no additional cost to the city. But Visit Tri-Cities asked us what that in-kind was, and we wanted to capture that so they can see that West Richland is putting forward quite a bit of effort, but it's not going to cover all the costs. I bet you it's probably going to be closer to three times that. You know, Visit Tri-Cities will be doing with the agreements structured, is they're responsible for the additional officer time, the additional maintenance time, traffic control devices, any of that above that amount is Visit Tri-Cities' responsibility per this agreement. So if we need to go and pull officers from Kennewick, whatever that cost is for the overtime, Visit Tri-Cities covers that. So just to kind of clarify how those numbers came up, and, and that was just to show, to capture the in-kind that the city's putting forward with it.
I'd like to add just a little bit on that ten thousand, too. So that ten thousand, we have a fund. It's primary resource is hotel motel tax. And we have collected over several years. There's, I think, the, about thirty-three thousand currently sitting in there. That's cash on hand. So the idea was it's ten thousand dollars of that money a year. So it is a very restricted source, and it specifically lists this as the marketing and operations of special events and festivals designed to attract tourists. So this is what that specific money is designated for.
And Chief, do you have anything that you might want to add in regards to how we work with our sister cities and, and back and forth?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So our partnership with the rest of the Tri-Cities and law enforcement, when events happen in the Tri-Cities, as you probably all well know, if you go to the boat races or the Benton County Fair and stuff, you'll see our officers there, and they do things like that in return for us. We had Hogs and Dogs. They were here every year that we had it. That is a understanding of agreement that we have in the Tri-Cities. I just reach out and I get the resources, and it's, and those things are already being planned. I just want to make another comment, too. With the public safety sales tax passed indefinitely for now, I'd imagine eight million dollars is probably going to bring in a little bit of extra public safety sales tax that weekend that the city will probably receive. It may not be a whole bunch, because I don't know how that works here, and I'm just thinking, that's a lot of, that's a lot of spending. So I just brought that up, too. But I'll tell you another thing that I think we pride ourselves, especially in West Richland, is that's our community partnership and stuff. Every event that we're involved in as a police department, I don't care if it's checkpoints at our road or anything like that, helps build the trust in the community that we have and our partnership with the community to help us with our, our mission in the police department. So I think it's wonderful.
Thank you, Chief. And Roscoe?
Councilman Smart, you asked about termination, so that was specifically written into it. It's a three-year agreement. But we wanted the ability, so if we do this first year and decide not for us, we can give them notice. It's set, we got to give them ten months' advance notice because it does create issues as far as reconfiguring the course. So it allows us, after this event in September, we basically got two months after that to decide if this is something we want to continue. So that's the way it's structured in the, in the agreement.
I have a quick follow-up. So is the route planned to be through the other cities as well? Or just West Richland? And then, secondly, what, what is that impact to our citizens? How long will the roads be closed or, or, you know, detoured?
So the, the swim is in Howard Amon down there. The bike course goes through Richland, cuts the corner of West Richland, heads back out into the county, comes back into West Richland, back into Richland. So it doesn't include Kennewick or Pasco, and then the, the run portion of it is in Richland. So really, the two cities and a portion of the county is, is where those are located.
Will be the bicycle route in West Richland?
Yes.
What, what's the time span of that? Do we know any, any idea?
Yeah, they are very specific, and they know exactly the window from the first athlete. It, it's actually pretty shocking. After meeting the Ironman, I had a lot of the same concerns, Councilmember, on how does this all work? How does it, you know? They've got a team that comes in and does this. They do all the traffic control. They work with us. Matter of fact, we just did a drive. So out of the... How long is the bike course? Fifty-six. Way more than I want to bike, but it's, eight miles of it is in West Richland. And so the piece it is, it would come into town, down, down, well, let me back up. It cuts the corner of Keene and Kennedy. It goes through an intersection there in the morning. And it has, it's, that's at the beginning of the race, so that window there is very small. We'll be working with Ironman. How do you get traffic through there? Is it with flaggers, maintenance workers, or is it actually officers? So we'll go through that. That's being developed now. It goes out into the county and then comes back Dallas Road, comes down the hill to down to Keene, and then heads out Keene, out to down to Keene and then heads out Keene, out to Van Giesen, hits Van Giesen out all the way around and until it gets into Richland. And so the coordination is going through, how do you, how do you close those intersections? You know, the later part, there's sometimes, I think it's four hours plus. So very similar to what we see on the Veterans Day Parade, closing portions of Van Giesen. And so all that's worked out, we'll have spots where traffic will be able to cross Keene Road. So from Bonn Range to Van Giesen, we're not going to, it'll be closed, but we'll want to be able to have people cross, say, at South Highlands. And there'll be traffic control there to safely allow cars across when the bicycles aren't coming by. So all that's going through and Visit Tri-Cities, like I said, it's pavement surface control, I think, is the consultant. So they're developing it. We're giving them our input and review with the police department to make sure that it it'll be an inconvenience, but they do a great job. The other part of it is the public notification and outreach. Very impressed, John, as far as how they send letters out, how they notify, get the information out on social media. So people know, hey, if you got to get to church on Sunday morning and this is your route, this is where you can get across. This is how you can get to it. And there's a lot of outreach to the churches.
So on these major art trails and Van Giesen, would it have to close off? Like just one lane or does it have to close off all in one direction or how's that work?
It's a combination of both. So areas that we can close down the whole road, like Bonn Range down to all the way to South Highlands, there's no driveways and all those side streets can go. So closing it eliminates the the conflict with the cars and the participants. There's other areas that we can detour traffic around. So if we can figure out a way to easily close it and allow those bikers to have it, that that's that's better for both the public and the but there is sections where you're just taking a lane or a partial lane.
And so did they happen to mention what the span of time is? They don't know, right?
So I've got, I've got Kevin right here and maybe Kevin can give us a little bit more detail as as Roscoe stated. He's done this before where the other city that he was in. So he would be the person that could really nail down the question that you have.
So what's what's the span between the winner and the loser?
Yeah, and there's a, if you, if you don't make it, they come pick you up and take you out.
I mean, scoop off the sidewalk.
These are, I gotta say, Mayor, I appreciate the questions. I think they're very legitimate questions and the answers have been pretty solid. What a, what a great team you have here. Thank you for the involvement that we've had so far with that. I think they've timed it out, Councilman Smart, that that when it enters West Richland, it's roughly about eight-thirty in the morning is the first entry into West Richland. And then the last exit out is about one P M. And so the there's a, there's a timeframe there that'll flow roughly, you know, each section will be at least two hours that where they're closed and up to four as Roscoe indicated. But that that's kind of the time span that will be, will be maneuvering traffic. Yeah, eight-thirty to one, one-thirty-ish.
And is there any concept of the number of people that would actually come to West Richland to watch this bike route versus those that are just going to stay in Richland by their hotels?
Yeah.
And watch the bikes go by as they head back to Howard Amon?
Yeah, honestly, the the, I think the spectator traffic from people that are coming into town is going to be very limited in West Richland. The gathering spot will be at Columbia Point there where most of the action's happening. But you will have some that go out and support their crews out on the course and then you'll have a lot of locals. One of the things I I read this quote once and it's it's with the concept of cathedral thinking, and I don't know if you know what that is, but where people don't want to build, or they don't want to just lay bricks in life, they want to build cathedrals. And and an event like this is what I see as something that's building cathedrals. Our community members get involved, the volunteers get involved, the athletes are involved, and they're and they're doing something that's bigger than themselves and broader, you know. And so you'll see the the volunteers in the community getting involved in this and getting inspired by the stories that happen. What I've seen over the years is just people, people come to know some of the the athletes that participate. They hear their stories, the things that they're trying to conquer in their lives. The reason they're doing an Iron Man event like this is usually because they're trying to overcome something else. They've got something else that they they want to battle, whether it's a, you know, personal health issue or a family tragedy or something like that. There's so many of those stories that are involved with it. And so as our community members get involved and see these things and participate and help with them, they grow, they get inspired, they become better people too. So that's one of the unsung benefits of it. It's just that, just that cathedral building mentality and how it inspires. There are also just a couple of things I'll share on the financial impact. You know, granted, West Richland doesn't have the tourism industry here yet. It's a, it's a, it's coming, I hope, and we'd like to see that. But those those sales taxes and those revenues go in a lot of different ways. You get the direct income from the from the spending, but you also get the indirect impacts from labor income. The residents of West Richland work in some of those businesses and other areas in the community. And so they're, they're also contributing to, you know, the the sales tax offsets and everything are coming. You're getting labor income, suppliers and support businesses, construction industry that build those hospitality businesses and all the services and support that go with that. And so it really does spread throughout all of the communities in in one way or another. There's some induced impacts because then those employees of those hospitality businesses go back and spend and do that throughout the the three communities or four communities. And and then the the tax revenue benefits that come in actually offset and using, you know, some some data from an organization called Tourism Economics, which is a an Oxford economics institution. They've determined that in the tri-cities, the tax revenue that is brought in by visitors offsets the local taxes. So yours and my annual tax spend by about six hundred dollars a year per household. So so again, there are, there are some benefits, even though you might have the direct impact from the the visitation. It's spreading throughout the community and offsetting the taxes throughout the community and helping the businesses, whether they're hospitality or not.
Go ahead. Did you have, you have another question for Kevin?
So has there been a, has there been a discussion or what is the alternative? What if West Richland doesn't pitch in? I just heard that Kennewick and Pasco are not, is Richland prepared to do this on their own or?
Well, the the trick is is getting that fifty-six mile course. And as we went.
A lot of circles around.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. As we went through the the different areas and tried to figure out how to do that and do it safely and make sense from an athlete perspective, this is the the route that came out about it. And so it is really critical to the event at this stage. In the future years, we've got some construction projects in West Richland that are going to change that. So we will, we'll navigate that as we go forward. But we we definitely want to work and and be, you know, in harmony with what the community's needs and desires are and try and work with that and just just make the most of, most of it for everyone.
And I had one other quick follow-up for Aaron, which is what, what are examples of things that we've used to fund or things that we have funded out of this hotel and whatever you called it? And what are our alternatives? Like what would we have spent this thirty-three K on if this wasn't coming to town?
Since I've worked for the city, the last twelve years, we have not spent any.
That's what I thought. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You know, that's a good point that that Aaron's brought forward is this is not general fund money. This is money that is is specifically set aside for these particular types of purposes. So I think that should really ease the council members in regards to where those funds are coming from. And then the 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 employees of the city are exempt employees. And this is just what they do and just another duty as described, so.
Yeah, I appreciate all of that explanation and I think that the, as described, I mean, and I think of what other opportunities West Richland might have to attract such attention, even if it's not as much attention as I'd like. Because I can really imagine a lot of people on George Washington Way or wherever they ride down there. I just, I'm struggling to find alternatives, alternative ways to to have the those funds spent in a productive way. So they are allocated and I appreciate those explanations. Thank you.
Kevin, if you need some more questions or answers, we'll, we'll call you back up. And with that, I said I would go to Councilmember Stoker next.
Well, my ultimate goal has been addressed. I mean, I really wanted this conversation. I think the the public should should hear this, not just read it in the packet. I appreciate Roscoe. One of my questions was around, you know, I didn't think the fifteen K in-kind would really cover exempt staff's output or involvement, but at least you, we have that out there. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, when I first heard this, I was like your average public citizen. Everybody wants parks. Yeah, I want parks. Give me parks. But then when you put a dollar sign on it, it gives you pause and you start to think, okay, is this a good investment? So this is, this helped me feel more comfortable about that pause moment when I see a dollar sign attached to it. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. I would just like to note that if folks are interested in seeing what the route looks like, Councilmember Fettow showed me that on the Iron Man website, pardon, the Iron Man seventy-point-three website, as it states the name is fully. It has a really good map and really shows where it all is. And I definitely can see how our future construction, let's just say, I don't envy anyone having to plan out how to get around that entire loop of the Van Giesen. That'll be fun. But I do see that it is going to be going all along Van Giesen from Keene all the way out to the exit there on the bridge. So I feel like that's a lot of places for people to really show off West Richland and, you know, wave to the folks riding bikes, have the water or whatever. So I I just really appreciate the opportunity and I know that this is actually a part of a larger effort of the tri-cities that came originally out of Vision twenty-forty? My try twenty-thirty, right, that turned into the different organizations. And Visit Tri-Cities is Iron Man seventy-point-three. So I just appreciate all of this coming to fruition. Thank you for including West Richland on that.
Councilmember Blue?
I'm not quite sure whether, I I'm totally in favor of this, not opposed to that. I I think I'll leave my questions because my books don't balance as far as this, this budget change. They're consistent with what numbers I have. Looking back at the budget document I could find, looks like we're getting about five thousand dollars a year for for the the fund. I mean, I.
Yeah, and there's, and then part of that is going to be the interest lately too. So.
Also, the interest is coming into that.
It's coming into that as well.
It's grown more than I thought, but just for for the biennium, we had projected about ten thousand dollars of income from the hotel motel tax, five thousand a year. So, you know, it's, and and as what was said, the more, the more activities in the tri-cities, the more those individuals visiting do taxes, those taxes come back to us in the way of services for Ben Franklin Transit, for the the various other, you know, the it it improves the economy, the whole area, and that's, we benefit from that overall. So thank you.
And I will agree. We've seen a big impact from Red Mountain Event Center and the events that they've they've put on. We've heard a lot from from all of the sister cities of how beneficial that is. Another thing that Kevin and I were talking about one time is is the, you know, take a look around when you're driving on the streets or walking, how many people see on bicycles and families and scooters and so on and so forth? These people are citizens that you're probably going to see lawn chairs lined up on Keene Road with a family event for the afternoon, watching this, you know, worldwide spectacular occur in the city of West Richland. So and I think it's an exciting time for people who are interested in that kind of stuff. And it's really amazing how many, how many enthusiast bicycle people we have that, you know, don't necessarily ride on the path. They'll go out, badger cannon and ride on the white line. But this is, this is certainly something I think is going to be beneficial for that, for our community. So if council has no other questions, we want one follow-up, Councilmember Smart?
Yeah, so just, you know, one brainstorm of an idea is, you know, has there been any thinking put into co-events to get people down to Van Giesen? You know, a food truck rally or something like this in Flat Top Park to give them more of a reason to sit out there and wait for bicycles to drive by? Just saying that there's an opportunity for some creative thinking there that we should, we should think about. So, thank you.
We'll, we'll, we'll task Kevin with that. You got a, got a comment for that one?
That's a brilliant idea and I love it. I think, I think it makes, just to make this event more spectacular and more involvement. We, we saw some of that. I've seen it in other destinations. They hosted a fitness festival at one of the parks and there was an aid station there. And so people came down, participated in the aid station and they had a complete fitness festival going on. So things like that, those can be germinated from the community or from the captains of the volunteer teams and things like that. So we, we would welcome that kind of an idea. Love it.
I was going to throw in, for the future ones, this is relatively, can we do a lap of the tri-city raceway?
Out and around, there you go. Very. All right, counsel, good conversation. Thank you very much for that. So I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this item this evening. If you would, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments three minutes. Seeing no one in house, we'll ask anybody virtually who'd like to address counsel on this item this evening, make comment. Virtual hand or star or eye to be recognized. Seeing no one. Stephanie, do you see anybody?
I do not.
That, counsel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Kevin, for your time this evening. Appreciate you coming in and answering questions, staff. You've done a wonderful job on this. It's been a lot of work so far and I'm sure that there'll be a lot more to come. But Roscoe, thank you very much for your due diligence and contract writing. And Kevin, I apologize, this guy is so thorough. You don't want to cross him in a, in a contract. That and Stephanie. Oh, yes, and Jessica. Yeah, there we go. We always got to run it by Jessica. She's, she's got the final say. She, she could be the dream wrecker. No, it's all good. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, with that, we will go on and move on to item eight G, which is an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four biennial budget. And with that, I'll ask our finance director, Gwen, to present her staff report this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Yuri. Good evening, counsel. This evening, I'm presenting the eighth budget amendment, the twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget. This budget amendment contains four items and four separate funds. The first item is for right-of-way costs associated with Keene Road Pathway Phase Four project. The city had previously secured federal funds to construct the project. And during the design phase, it was determined that additional slope easement would need to be obtained and retaining wells built to limit the impact to the adjacent farm fields. This has added approximately two hundred and eight thousand dollars in right-of-way costs for the project. This budget amendment appropriates the additional funding from the one oh four Park Impact Fund, the ending fund balance. This item was previously reviewed and recommended by the Council Parks Subcommittee. The second item in this amendment is to appropriate the ten thousand dollars from Fund one oh six Tourism and Promotion Fund to support the Iron Man seventy-point-three event scheduled for September of two thousand twenty-four. The next item is for State Route two twenty-four Red Mountain Improvement Project. On December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, council authorized the mayor to execute Amendment number two to the Washington State Department of Transportation participating agreement for the project. This budget amendment recognizes the additional five point five million dollars in revenue in connecting Washington funding, as well as appropriates the same amount to the project expenditures in the three oh one REIT fund. The final item is in the four four one Water System Development Fund for the Well Ten ASR Project. On December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, council authorized the mayor to execute Amendment number six to the Engineering Services Contract for the project with J U B, as well as Amendment number five to the, to the Department of Ecology Grant Agreement for the Well Ten ASR Project. This amendment recognizes an additional seventy-one thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars in grant revenue and increases appropriations in the same amount for engineering services associated with the project. Staff recommends passing the ordinance. This amendment authorizes an increase in the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four appropriations in the amount of five million seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and an increase in total resources. and an increase in total resources in the amount of five million five hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars, bringing the total revised budget to one hundred and forty-five million four hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Thank you, Erin. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this agenda item this evening? If so, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I see no one in house. Virtually star nine or raise your virtual hand to be recognized to address, make comment on this agenda item this evening. Stephanie, I do not see anybody virtually. Do you?
I do not, no.
That, council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to pass ordinance zero four dash two four amending the city of West Richland, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four biennial. Second.
Motion is second. Any questions that have been previously answered from our staff report this evening? Seeing no one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, council. We do not have any unfinished business, but we do have some new business this evening. Have a couple of items under new business. First, we need to select a mayor pro temp for the next two years. And then also we need to have a discussion in regards to council committee assignments. So what I'll do for the mayor pro temp is I will ask for nominations for mayor pro temp for two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. I'll open the floor to nominations for that position.
Mr. Mayor, I move to reappoint Councilmember Brink to that position for the next two years.
Is there any other nominations from the council for mayor pro temp? Nope, I see no other motions. So with that, may I have a motion to appoint Mayor Pro Temp or Mayor Pro Temp Brink as the continuing mayor twenty-four and twenty-five? Just get twenty-five and twenty-four and twenty-five.
I move to appoint Mayor Pro Temp Brink.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, sir. Appreciate everything you've done in the past and I'll make sure I'll give you a little bit more to do in the future. So with that, we, we have council committee assignments. And is there anybody that would like to make any changes for our committee assignments for the next two years? I'll open the floor up for conversation.
I'll jump right in. So I've had a hard time making it to the HAB meetings, which are during working hours because I actually still work. And so I appreciate Mr. Bloom, Councilmember Bloom stepping in for me. So I think that change has been made. I will be happy to continue as an alternative there. If that's, if, if no one else is chomping at the bit, but otherwise, my other comment would be that I really appreciated going to the Good Roads Meetings with Roscoe. I feel like I've gotten to know what that organization is all about and if we have a representation there. In addition to Roscoe, I would be glad to be an alternate for that or primary, whichever he wants.
You're, you're, you're good with continuing on that time of your life you won't get back?
Chuck Torelli of Kennewick says it's, it's a time suck.
So with that, Stephanie, we'll, as we do our new one, we'll make sure that the, the primary and the alternate is, is noted. Anybody else have any changes that they'd like to make or conversation about? Mr. Mayor?
I'm now vice chair of the Yakima Basin Fish and Wildlife Recovery Board because nobody else would step up. And they have to, well, vice chair and auditor or some, you know, chair treasurer, you have to have a treasurer. But we don't have an alternate and it might be worthwhile having an alternate because we are, every once in a while, it'd be nice for somebody to walk into that rogue role. And it's not, it's not a huge commitment.
Could you, could you give us a briefing of, of the time commitment that that would be if you wouldn't be able to participate?
Usually about four meetings a year and there's the annual meeting.
Once a quarter and then an annual meeting?
Correct.
And that's where at in Yakima?
It's in Yakima. As, as vice chair, I get a few more meetings, but you don't have to deal with them.
Or anybody that would like to take on an alternate position for that particular board?
For which particular board and?
Yakima Basin Fish Wildlife Recovery Board. It is a board, let me give you a background. It's a board made up of basically Yakima, Kinnatac and Benton County. We have two cities represented in Benton County, Prosser and my, and West Richland and County Commissioner. And actually Adam File fills in backup for County Commissioner. But then we have Yakima and we just changed, it used to be Union Gap, but another city in Yakima. And, and the Yakima Commissioner. And then we have a Kinnatac Commissioner and we're trying to find another city in Kinnatac, but we also have why did my mind go blank?
Well, you remember it an awful lot more than I would have.
So, so
Basically board.
The meetings are typically from two to four in the afternoon and they're, they're, they can be revoked.
And then also I believe there's boots on the ground, field trips that go along with, with that board, which are quite interesting.
Well, the, the annual meeting is a little bit longer and it will have some, some tours of the area. The next annual meeting will be up in Kinnatac County. I, yes. No, it'll be in Yakima.
They send out an annual, I get an annual report of all of the projects that they've done through all of our waterways and tributaries and streams and rivers, all of the rehabilitation, all these. It's quite interesting what this board does. It's, 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 it does real well for the
We actually don't do anything. We just give out money.
Well, the money that they give out is reported as to what the projects are. So anybody interested in taking an alternate position in regards to that? And if not, we'll just go ahead and roll with what we've got. If you do, take into consideration, you could reach out to Stephanie. You don't have to make that decision yet this evening if you don't want to. Okay, all righty. Real good. So with that, let's see.
Pardon? I'm wondering, I have been having difficulty getting to the Port of Kennewick meetings, although we don't have an official role. We do go there as a, a guest and watch. I'm wondering if anybody would be interested in taking on the primary for that? Now that I'm working more in the office now and have a different job, it's more difficult for me to get to that meeting at two P M. So if anybody was interested in attending the Port of Kennewick meetings, that would probably
And just for everybody's FYI, I did find out that they have finally gone back to in-person meetings once a month. The first meeting of the month and is in person and the second meeting is just virtual.
Right, which is why I'm not able to go, especially because of the in-person one that is in attendance. So.
Tuesdays, yeah, their meetings are, are the, the first, it's the first, first and third Tuesdays, second, second and fourth?
Second and fourth, yes.
Is it two? They, the, the in-person meetings can get long if they've got a, a busy agenda. When I was doing it, there would be times I wouldn't get out of there until five or six o'clock, but other times it was pretty quick. It just depends on how, how much topic or controversy, yes. That seemed to subsided considerably.
I could probably step in and help with the in-person one now that I'm retired.
Let's, it's, it's a way to get to Clover Island and have lunch at Ice Harbor at the island, yes.
And
That would help you.
That would be great because since you are my alternate, if you want, we could flip. And then if there are anywhere you're not able to make, just let me know and I'll see if I'm able to swing it.
And then also, Mayor Richard stepped up to be the lead on that because I was still working and things were a little, little crazy then. And so I didn't know if Richard wants me to go back to lead. I've been working with the Hanford site lately with the, the concept of a veteran cemetery coming in, not necessarily out there, but been working with them. And if he wants me to take the lead back and, and he be the backup on it, or if he want to keep the lead.
I, I kept having to make, make sure which one was in charge. Either way, I, you, i- if you feel comfortable taking the lead, as long as we, we let them know.
Yes. Yeah, I'll talk with David. Yeah. So if that's okay.
Flip. Hanford Community is from, okay. May, may I'll be, may I'll be primary, you'll be alternate. All right. Give a new face. Okay. And then, May, you're going to go ahead and take Port of Kennewick. And it's a primary and you're going to go alternate. And if you, if you wouldn't mind getting together with Councilmember Hayes and giving her a little Paul Harvey, that's the rest of the story for your own people of what goes on there. And then maybe if it's possible, if you could make an appearance, the two of you and introduce Councilmember Hayes, that would be wonderful.
That depends on where my calls are for my jobs.
And another thing, I was just, I was just thinking about what we could do too, because it is, uh, we are going to be making a presentation to the Port of Kennewick with the Red Mountain Event Center and that would be a great opportunity for us to meet, introduce you to me. We'll coordinate that with Eric. You want to, you want to make note when, we haven't got to that date yet set. But now that they're back in personal meetings, the, when we did the economic outlook, I was talking with Commissioner Holmberg and I told him that this would be a good opportunity for us to get back in front of them, to give them an update as to the status of the Red Mountain Event Center and the successes that we've had out there. And we could also introduce Councilmember Hayes at that time. So I think we've got them all covered, do we? We all good, Stephanie? Got it? All right, perfect. Let's see. All right. So I'm going to ask Eric to give us a follow-up on the city survey update.
Yes, so as it was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, there is going to be a launch of the second annual citywide survey. It'll be starting on March first and running through March thirty-first. This year, we have the same questions as we did last year, except in place of the fireworks and cannabis questions, we'll be asking about communication methods and garbage recycling. These surveys are intended to educate staff and council on citizen priorities and focuses, which will feed into the city's budget. And this year, being a budget preparation year, this information will be invaluable to that process. You can see last year's responses to the city, on the city's website. And when this year's is completed, it'll also be posted for everyone to see and review. Last year, we emailed those who signed up for electronic utility building and advertised on social media and posted at City Hall and Library. We did receive some feedback on that. This year, we are going to be adding to those outlets. We're going to be including a Q R code in the utility biller, billing mailer. We'll be sending out a postcard so that everyone, every resident in West Richland, whether they have a utility account or not, will be able to receive that. So we're hoping to get to some of those underrepresented communities. We will really want everyone to have a chance to be heard and provide us feedback. Again, the survey will be running through the month of March. So keep an eye out for the survey in your mailbox.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. All right, now we'll move on to our second citizens' public comment. If you'd like to provide comment to city council, go ahead and come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. While remember, and we do not have a conversation back and forth with council and the podium individual. So if you'd like to address council?
Hello, my name is Nino Capitula. My address is sixty-seven eighty-three Caspian Place in West Richland. And I'm here because I, since our last encounter that we had here in regards to possible pot shop location in West Richland, I came across a very interesting article that was done by Seattle Times, out of all people, and it, it addressed a potency of, of the plant. And unfortunately, with the legalization of the pot shops, what happened is there are new strands that have been produced that have consistency of a hundred, nearly a hundred percent concentration of THC. And there are many, many studies that show compared to fifteen percent that, let's just say, our parents and grandparents had a chance to try, okay? And where am I going with this? There are abundant medical studies that show that if you're underage, so, and you're, you know, under thirty, you will have, it will cause severe undevelopment of your brain. So that's major. And then adults, it's been linked to schizophrenia and other psychological issues. Where I'm going with this, I believe that you've been entrusted with position of authority and I just ask that you then execute good judgment and be really conscious of the decisions that you guys are going to make because my question is, how are you going to regulate this aspect of the industry? Is the potency of the plant itself? Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Terry Davies, thirty-seven oh six South Lake Drive in West Richland. And just a couple of observations over the discussions this evening. And one, I wanted to, I want to look at the route for the Ironman, just so I can visualize that as well. And I'm, if I understand it correctly, it looks like it's going to be the Kennedy and Keene Crossroad. I don't know. Anyway, I'll have to look at it more closely. But I want to just put that in connection to the option of putting in the pot shop in West Richland and where the one is in the county. We talked about this as an opportunity with an Ironman to have, you know, a broader exposure of our community into the greater, you know, sports and family-friendly and competitive environments. And so I think that, that's something to consider when someone's coming through West Richland, what is it that they see in terms of what our businesses are and what it is that we're supporting or having. So in terms of our image and what we want to bring across in that regard. And the other one was, I hope that some of the businesses maybe, I, I don't know, is the Ironman on a Sunday? I don't know if anybody can answer me. So hopefully some of our businesses that serve the community that are typically closed on Sunday will be open or be considered to be open to take advantage of the opportunity. I think it sounds awesome and amazing for that as well. And I, I don't even know what the other one was, but that's what I have. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Kevin Schumaker, seventeen oh eight Elmwood Avenue. I know you can't answer questions, but I was just thinking about the, the fact that if I heard this correctly, the question of cannabis is being removed from the city survey that's coming out. Considering there was a lot of debate over whether or not the last survey was, if the questions were clear, if they were adequately addressed, this seems like an opportunity for us to ask the question in a more clear fashion so that we have some information. I know that the plan is to move forward to put this on the ballot. But if we add a, asked maybe a better question about the cannabis and it came back that ninety percent of the citizens were against it, then maybe we can save that seventy-five thousand dollars to put it on the ballot. So I know you can't answer the question, but I was just thinking that seems odd to remove a question that seems to be such a critical subject at this time when you have the survey coming out anyway. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? And we'll reach out to our virtual participants. Raise your virtual hand if you would like to make public comment or star nine if you're by phone. Stephanie, I do not see any virtual hand or star nine, do you?
I do not, no.
That will go ahead and move on to staff and council announcements and reports. So I've been always starting with staff for a while, so I'm gonna start with council this evening. Change her up a little bit in twenty-four. Councilmember Fettow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick story. About a month ago, attended the Spokane Chiefs hockey game and had a little heart incident. Nothing major, just something that made me say, huh, that's kind of a weird thing. Have a friend of mine who's a cardiologist, called, texted him Saturday morning and just said, hey, give me a call. Want to see if there's something I'd be concerned with. Throw a couple of weeks forward and I had a complete blockage of one of my arteries. So what I want to say to everybody, if, if I didn't know this doctor, I would not have called a doctor out of Google. I wouldn't have called my primary care doctor because it takes me six months to see him. And it wasn't severe enough that it made me say, holy crap, I need to go do something. And what I was told by the surgeon, so I had to get a stent, and I'm looking around the room, there's a lot of men of same age as I am, same age range. So what, what I really want to say was, pay attention, get checked out. Heart disease is, you know, the number one killer of men. Prostate cancer is right behind that. Prostate cancer does not require a physical exam anymore, now it's just a blood test. So for everybody of that age and ladies, if you have husbands, fathers, brothers at home, I would also maybe pass the information along. It's just, what the surgeon told me was if I had not done anything and had a heart attack, the chances of me surviving would have been whether or not I was in the emergency room when it happened, or if I wasn't. He said if I was not in the emergency, if I was anywhere else and I had a heart attack, there was no chance of survival. There was no blood going through that one artery. It was the second main artery on the right side. I, I don't know the full anatomy of the heart, but anyway. Listen to your bodies, get checkups, pay attention and, and pass the news along just to go, listen to what's happening. Thank you.
Glad you're doing well, and I won't go to a hockey game. I can guarantee you that. I'm glad, I'm glad things worked out for you, councilmember. I believe Councilmember Bloom was up next.
Well, as part of Yakima Basin Fish and Wildlife Recovery Board, last week I went and visited with Senator Dozer, Torres, and Beneky, and also Representative Clicker. Senator Dozer says he's gonna get your money. But he was basically there to, to talk to the representatives of the area. I mean, there were other members of the Yakima Basin, which talked to the representatives in the upper, upper basin. But the, to promote the, the bills that were proposed during the session, many of them didn't go very far. But one bill is still alive, which is Senate Bill fifty-eight thirty-four, which is, allows local governments to adjust urban growth areas acre by acre and remove acreage which can't grow. And what comes to my mind, we have some acreage that's critical area that we can't have. We could move other acreage in that could be developed. And the bill passed the Senate and it's going to the House. It's in the Governmental Affairs Committee. They're having a hearing tomorrow and it'll go to the House. Representative Clicker said, if the Senate passes it, we'll pass it. So look forward to that. It's fifty-eight thirty-four. Look forward to that, and we might look at opportunities for moving acreage from critical areas. So, and relative to the heart, I, I've been told I had a heart problem for the last fifteen years. And I've finally come to the conclusion, I don't. So I have no heart.
Okay.
But anyway.
Thanks, councilmember. Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. Well, first, on the seventh and eighth, both myself and Mayor Protem Brink went up to Olympia for the AWC City Action Days, and that was, I think, really beneficial. We got to meet both the representatives for the sixteenth and the senator. Had some meetings with them, I think, that went fairly well, actually really well. And got to visit the new AWC facility. And then on the, let's see, the sixteenth, there was the Benton Franklin Council of Governments meeting. And that meeting, I learned that the Council of Governments has put in for the sustaining federal funding initiative grant requesting eighty-five thousand dollars for a temporary grant rider. And that would be something where both BF Cog and the members of BF Cog would be able to use the, the grant rider to benefit them. So I think that that would be really great if we can get that grant so that if the city of West Richland was hoping to use any of their efforts, that would work really well, hopefully. And then I need to get back with him, but Commissioner Didier, I believe, was speaking about some drought help from the Columbia Basin Sustainable Water Consortium, although I'm sure that Councilmember Bloom probably might be familiar with it. Maybe not. Doesn't look like you are. Never mind. It's okay. I'll talk to him later and ask. Let's see. And then, other than that, definitely agree with you on the heart thing, although I will say, and this is a weird sentence that I was about to say, I was gonna say, don't sleep on your teeth, but that's weird. Pay attention to your teeth too, because I just found out that I had a tooth that was cracked all the way down below the gum line and had to have a root count. If I wouldn't have done anything about that, the infection on the root behind that would have gotten to my blood and caused heart issues. So definitely keep an eye on your teeth. If it hurts, see something, see somebody for it. And then Chief, are you going to talk about this past weekend?
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I was ill. I wasn't able to make it.
Okay, so I wasn't there, but I could talk about it in my staff report if you want, Mayor.
Councilmember Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to make mention, it was an honor to, we had, we lost a firefighter. And his funeral was this last Monday. And Aaron was a wonderful person, dedicated to his job, to his family, had a young family, a little five-year-old. And so, and I've had the privilege of knowing him and knowing the family. And so this was, been, been very difficult. So I sent condolences for the, the city and I saw Fred was there, so. Cause he's their commissioner, fire commissioner, but it was, if, I just, I would just love us as a community to get behind our first responders, our firefighters, our police, and there's been so many things that have happened lately and even in our region. And get behind them, get behind their families and let them know that they're loved and we care about them and that we're there for them. I think that's really important because all their jobs, from the police to the fire, to everybody's jobs are extremely difficult this day and age. So my heart goes out to, to them, the family and the young child that has lost his dad. So that, and it was an honor to be there and it was an honor to be, to, to witness a firefighter's funeral that they put on. There was firefighters from across the US that came, one from Florida and Colorado and just all over that came to celebrate his life. So it, it was beautiful. So I just wanted to share that with you and, and to let the family know that, that as a whole, this community stands behind them. And then on a later note, I've had the privilege to be working with Olympia, with the VA over in Olympia for this last, what's going on, over a year now, and working with the, the veteran cemetery up in Medical Lake. And so what the goal of the region is, is that we bring a veteran cemetery to this region. Not knowing where the location is yet. But I do have some flyers and I'll give one to Stephanie to, to put in, if we can get it in the city news. But Olympia's coming down on May twenty-second. And a huge thank you to the chief. It's gonna be hosted at the West Richmond Police Department from ten to twelve. And they'll do a presentation on veteran cemeteries, what it takes to, to have one in our area and, and all the details. And then it'll be opened up for the public to ask questions. So we're, we've been out now, reaching out to all the veteran organizations. We've been reaching out to businesses. We've been reaching out to the public as a whole to invite them to come to this and show that how grateful we would be if we would have a veteran cemetery in this region. And they've cited this area as a key area for a cemetery due to the amount of veterans that live here. And it would help service from Moses Lake to Walla Walla to Hermiston to Yakima, and the Tri-Cities would be the hub. So I encourage anybody that has veterans in the family, or you're a veteran, or you just support our veterans like we all should, that you guys try to come to this meeting or, and keep up on the facts and what's coming down, because it's, it's really exciting. There's a lot more happening each day. And so I'm just honored to be part of this movement forward for a veteran cemetery in this region. So I have some flyers if anybody wants to take one at the end of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, May. Appreciate it.
Real quick, I'm sorry. I just, I just want to thank Eric. Eric has, and, and Tom, but Eric has, has helped me through a bunch of stages with this, and the city's been behind that time, and I just appreciate that because I think this would be great for our whole root region, but be great for West Richland. So thank you.
Thanks for what you're doing on that, Councilmember Hayes. I know that we've had conversations with the county as well. That's a big task that you've, you've taken on, but I know Councilmember Hayes, and so since she's retired, she's got all kinds of time to make it happen. So thank you.
It's not just one person, it's a village.
A team, a village, yeah. Takes a village, right? Councilmember Smart?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council, Alchis, that was a great segue. I've got for May's comments. I don't have all the, I don't plan to share the details with you tonight, but I did forward to Stephanie a note forwarded to me by a friend, who's a police officer and a couple of them actually, that we have an opportunity to hear about an organization called Thin Line Counseling and Consulting. And I don't, I'm not promoting or saying that it's a great deal, but I would like to hear more about what they have to say as far as potential benefits to our city. So hopefully Stephanie and the mayor can get that on the agenda. I've given them their, their contact information. So they wrote to me with a number of statistics and so forth, similar to what you just related, May. And I think it is a, a topic that we want to, we want to be very careful not to become one of the statistics in our department, in our city, I hope. So that talks about divorce rates and PTSD and all sorts of things that our officers may be subject to. So I would be interested in hearing more about preventive measures and those, and those things. And then last, I just want to mention that when it comes to the survey, I wanted to ask if we're gonna have an opportunity as council to hear from the survey provider again, like we did last time, or I presume that the minimum staff will be in contact with them. But will we get to, when will we get to hear what the questions are? And, and maybe more importantly, there was a lot of discussion last time about, you know, false, potential fraudulent or suspect respondents. And so I have actually two concerns there. One, well, I'm not gonna go into all my concerns, but let me say there's two main concerns. One is, you know, how do we know that we're getting to everyone? For example, if I have a household, frankly, in my household, we have five voters. We all share an IP address. So if we all take this survey, I want to be sure that we're not discounted as being, you know, an effort to thwart the survey. And I know of other people who have far more voters living in a single house and a single IP address. That's one concern. And then the other was just the opposite, you know, how do we prevent? So many, we had something like a sixth or a fifth of our respondents last time were suspect. And that, that kind of blows away the whole efficacy of the survey in my mind. So I just want to know if we're gonna have time to address those things and maybe come up with some creative ways to thwart that. So thank you. I'll just leave that. I'm expecting an answer tonight, Eric. I just want to put that in people's minds and then I would hope that it could be addressed in the future before the survey comes out. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I will just add a little bit more comment to what Councilmember Hayes said with regard to the veterans cemetery. I'm one of several veterans here at the dais. I know we have veterans on city staff, as well as I know of at least one veteran here in the audience tonight, but public turnout at this meeting would be very, very beneficial. I think it's one of the paramount things that we as a community should strive for, to recognize our veterans and to have a veteran cemetery in the area. So I encourage you to all take part, if your schedules permit, at this meeting. I will also add a little bit of comment with regard to the services held this weekend. For one of our Benton County Fire District Four firefighters, Lieutenant Aaron Malloy, his death was not in the line of duty. Tragic though it was, it was an accidental death. But he did serve our community. He worked on sea shift under Captain Bob Shannon at, at the fire district. So if you have a chance, if you go by the fire district, just stopping in and passing your condolences would mean a great deal, if you have a chance to do it. Because that is our fire department for the city, as well as the adjacent areas of Benton County. The, two more things I'll mention, the mayor and I, hoping not to steal your thunder, Mr. Mayor, had the privilege of touring the Columbia Generation Station up there on the south end of the Hanford site on February first, and was very enlightening from my standpoint. I've been near nuclear reactors. I haven't been that close to one in a very long time. But just getting a grasp and a realization of the vital necessity that the Columbia Generation Plant represents and the challenges that we will face as a community with the removal of the Snake River dams and the energy consumption in the area. So I was very fortunate to have that tour and enjoyed it thoroughly. And fortunately, did not achieve a excessive radiation dose while I was walking around there. Lastly, I'll mention this. Lastly, I'll mention this. Have a couple of members on our city council who are eligible to apply for a position on the AWC, Association of Washington City Board of Directors. I will be vacating my position as secretary this June, as I have been nominated to take the position of Vice President for the coming year. So I encourage those individuals that meet the qualifications to consider an application. It's an extremely rewarding position. I've enjoyed it thoroughly. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I, I did get confirmation that we will receive our picture next to the big generator because it's, it's cleared clearances and, and so we'll get a, get a picture by the big generator, put your hand on that thing and boy, that's, that baby's a movin'. It's, it's pretty impressive. It moves at such a slow rate, but it creates an awful lot of power. Yeah, it was a very enlightening tour. So thank you for saying that. Yeah, it was a very enlightening tour. So, thank you for sending that up with Josh, uh, Josh Lo, what? Lozano, who used to be, uh, Congressman Newhouse Representative, had a West Richland resident, uh, now works for, uh, Energy Northwest. And, and they were having a, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Brink and, and Josh were having a conversation at a, a layover at an airport. And he scored us a, an in-house tour of the, of the plant. And it was, it was, it was way cool. So, uh, we're gonna go back. Oh, no, that's a different one.
On the Hanford site? No, on the park.
They, they, they were, we were up there, but they were working on it. And you can't cross that line because we didn't have the proper credentials to do that. So, no swimming pool. Alrighty. And, uh, so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to staff. And I'm gonna let Roscoe do the thunder on Olympia when we get to him and, and the accomplishments that we've achieved there. I'll start with Chief Gregor, however.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Council. Um, tonight I'll start off with, if you've noticed the crime stats that have been given out, um, by Stacy there, it appears that crime has gone up. It's starting to go up. I'll say that there's a couple of things going on there. Obviously, the, the officers are catching people committing crime, but I also think that the team right now has been really proactive. If you look at Class B crimes from last year to this year, which one of them is DUIs. They think in January, I think it was seven or nine. Anyway, I don't have it in front of me. But, um, they, I think they're just out there catching more, um, crimes being committed and stuff. So, that's good. Maybe hopefully, you know, turn, turn the curve back the other direction if they're out there pounding the ground proactively. So that, I just wanna do a shout out to them. They're doing really good work out there. And, um, I really appreciate it. The second thing is, uh, K9 Kisses and Coco, the West Richardson Community Care Foundation, along with the West Richardson Police Department, held an event, uh, Sa- Saturday this weekend, uh, was their first one ever, where they just brought out the public, uh, to have smores with, um, over a fire and stuff. What they call it, I'm sorry, warming, something. Anyway. Anyway, it was a good time. They said they had a great time. They said they wished they would have made more money for, obviously, to give back to the community, but they still had a great time with the community. So, um, all in all, good, good stuff. Talk about law and justice, talk about Olympia. Well, a couple of weeks ago, I went to Law and Justice with WASPIC and stood, um, represented for Law and Justice Day for us. And I would tell you that, um, WASPIC had reported back to us saying that we made some pretty big impact over there for, um, positive laws to help the community or, um, just be a good voice of what's actually going on in the street, you know, and, and giving our impact on the, or our input on the bills. Um, so I'm pretty honored and, and to be part of that stuff. But I just wanna say that they said it was one of the greatest turnout. So, I wanna let the community know that the chiefs and sheriffs of Washington State are really stepping up, trying to do what's best for the community and represent our own community as well in Olympia. So, that was all I had tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Slate?
A couple items. So, thank you, Council, for awarding the South 38th Project. That's the repair of the road from the waterline break that we had back in September. Uh, the good news is we received excellent bids and the repair work from last year was under what we estimated. So I think originally I told you 550 total, we're probably gonna be under 350. So, good news. Engineering Department did a great job putting that project together. I don't have a construction start date, but it will be 20 days that 38th will be closed with a detour like it was before. By closing it, we get cheaper prices because we don't have to do flaggers in half the thing. So a little bit of in, in, impact to the residents having to drive around, but, uh, saves a lot of money. And as soon as I have a, a start date, we'll let you know. We gave them a lot of flexibility between now and November to get it done. So the contractor will, will have a pre-con and figure out when those 20 days are and get notices out to the public for that. The other thing is fringe waivers. We seem to be getting one or two every meeting. So I've challenged staff to look at the municipal code and see if there's some amendments that we can do. Seems like a lot of these are, are small short plats, um, that have no improvements next to it. So we're granting those fringe waivers and with an LED and, uh, right-of-way dedication. So I've asked them to look at the exemptions and see what we can change in the code to spend our time on other things if that's, you know. So look forward to, to that. Um, we just had a public, two public hearings for two more that would fall in that category. So we're gonna look at a way to outright exempt those type of things. And, uh, oh, last thing, the Olympia trip. So yes, the mayor and I, we're at Olympia for two days up at the end of January. Meeting with, uh, senators and representatives from the 8th and 16th. So Senator Dozier, Representative Rude, uh, Representative Clicker from the 16th. And then even though we're not in the 8th anymore, we tell them they're stuck with us. Um, and so Senator Banky, uh, Representative Connor and, uh, Representative Bernard met with them. But we're, uh, what's really been helpful is the relationship, you know, uh, Troy Burglin and Benton already talked about our partnership. They set us up with the relationships with our representatives and senators, showed us, you know, how the, how it works in Olympia. It was new to me, you know, having to put a suit up and go walk around. But they, they built that relationship. So when you go up there and meet with them, you already have credibility and it helps. Uh, we were able to meet with Senator Leas, who's the Senate Chair on the, uh, on the Democratic side. And then Senator Curtis, who's the ranking member on the Republican side, both, uh, on the Transportation Committee. That also gives us meetings with Representative Fai and Representative Barkus. Not in our district, they're all west-side people, but they wanna meet with us and understand, um, how we're doing the Red Mountain Project and helping DOT out. Um, so it was very good meeting. Uh, the legislative session is not over, but we were well-received in our request for another 2.2 million. Uh, that was, I think 440,000 was actual DOT, needed for DOT staff time for review. They underestimated what they need to, to do the review, our work. And the other 1.7 was a risk assessment, uh, study that was, or analysis that was completed. And they're looking at inflation costs of rock, concrete. And with us going out to bid in 2025, they felt that, uh, we need another 1.7. So that's kinda what, uh, is in, in play. Um, we've seen drafts of both the House and Senate budget come out, you know, and we're listed. So we'll see how they combine it. And it's not done until it's done. But again, it starts with a re- relationship and Benton REA has really, uh, hooked us up and, and opened those doors to build those relationships. So when we do have a need to be able to go up there and, and make it count. So, it, it was a good, long two days. Yeah. They kinda explained it where you, nine 15-minute meetings throughout the day run around. But it was, it was good and, uh, productive. So.
That, that was super important. There's no way without Benton REA, uh, and, uh, their, their lobbyists, Pat Dunn and Jennifer, uh, that we would have been successful, both with the first five, about 5.5 million that we were asking for. And then now, uh, because of the DOT issue, uh, this 2-2, uh, 2, yeah, uh. Because when you go into their offices, when the lobbyists have already had conversations with them and kinda teed them up and, and really given them the, the insight of why things need to be the way that they are, uh, they're more receptive as opposed to an, you know, uh, somebody coming in with a, a one-page leaflet and then you get a couple of minutes and this is what we want. Well, we have an explanation as to why and the necessity of it and the importance of it. And it's, and, and the commitment of connecting Washington money goes clear back to the days with Governor Gregoire and, and Leo Bowman locally here. Uh, so with Benton REA's partnership, uh, we've been able to be successful in retaining those millions of dollars and, and moving forward with this project, which is a game changer for the city of West Richland. Uh, so, uh, we're very beneficial for the partnership we have with Benton REA. And Roscoe does look good in a suit, even though he sometimes leaves his dry cleaning tag on the back collar, but it's all good.
At least you didn't have to go through snow.
Yeah.
I had four inches of snow last Thursday.
Thank you, Roscoe, for working with Jennifer and Pat and, and REA as hard as you do off-scene from, from us being together with them. Eric?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to address, uh, some comments that I've made, made this evening about the survey. I realize that I work for the government, so no one's gonna trust me. Um, and so that's why I send these surveys out, is I'm really trying to get at what people want. Um, I want to be able to be completely transparent about it. So we publish all of the information on our website. Anyone can go out there and read every word that's said. Um, and there's things that are said out there. You can go read it and it's, it's all there. Um, we're not editing any of that information. So with this survey, we didn't change any of the questions, except for the two kind of at-liberty questions that we have. And we, last year, we wanted to find out about fireworks because there's been, uh, after every Fourth of July, we always get, uh, a herd of, of feedback about how we don't want fireworks in the community. So we really wanted to know what the community's feedback was on that. So we asked that question. We also knew that we had this application last year about marijuana. So we put that in there last year, wanted to get some feedback on that. Um, we've moved past those now. We already have direction on both of those. So now we're asking questions about communication, how we're gonna get communication out to people. What's the best way to communicate to people? So those are gonna be kinda the questions that we're asking. The other one was, uh, recycle, curbside recycling. So we're asking questions about recycling and, and what the community's feedback is on that, to see if it's worth the effort in going into all of that. So.
Are we asking how much they're willing to pay?
Yes, that's the question. Uh, because there, there is a tangible element to that. As far as the, the credibility of it, and, and I've explained this ad nauseam, but last year, there was a, um, it was a link that was sent out, that was a test link that was intended just for staff to go in there and test and check it out. That got sent out to people on Facebook. So there were some individuals on Facebook that took it. Ron found that anomaly and went, oops, this isn't right. Within 24 hours, it was taken down and fixed. We don't have that problem this time around. Um, there's not gonna be a test option for people, for staff to look at. Um, we trust that Ron's doing the right job there. He does have multiple methods. So as you look at the, this last survey that was taken, you can see what the response rate was, how many people took the Facebook survey, how many people took the survey through their utility email. A majority of the responses we received last night, per the, per the analysis that came back, was through that email that was sent out to everyone. This time, we have a QR code for, or a link for all the different communication methods. It helps us understand what's the best way we are communicating with people, too. Kinda answers one of the survey questions a little bit for us, but it also helps us understand, are we spending our money where we need to be spending it to really get the best feedback from people? If you have multiple people in your family that you want to be able to take it, everybody, everybody in my family has one of these, different IP address. Take it with your cellphone. Um, that way you don't have to worry about that. Um, we do wanna make sure that we're not giving someone that's going in and doing a, a bot and just having the same survey responded back over and over again. And that's what Ron does check on. And he did pull some of those out to make sure that there wasn't gonna be, uh, so there's credibility, right? Cause we're, that's a big thing that we wanna have. That's why we hired Ron to do this, is because he has done this for large corporations like T-Mobile and Coca-Cola and Pepsi and the big brands that really depend on good information. So we didn't just go find someone on the street corner and ask them to put together a survey for us. We went and found the guy that could do this for us and give us credible information back. Um, he won't be doing a presentation. If you have specific questions you want to ask me, feel free to email me and I'll pass them along to Ron and I'll get those back to you. Um, if I get, uh, every council member wanting information, I can probably set something up and have them come. He will, I do foresee him coming at the end of the survey to kind of explain how it went down and explain it and answer questions that you guys will have af- at the end, like we did last time. But given the fact that most of the questions, except for the two optional questions that we run, um, are gonna be the same questions we asked. And a lot of that, too, is just to have some consistency. You know, what's the level of service here? Is it going up or down? How can we change? What do we need to change? And they'll give us some, uh, year-to-year results that we can go look back on and see, okay, is this customer service level going up or going down? What do we need to do to change that? What's the, the root here that we need to make some changes to? So that's really the purpose of asking the same questions, is so that we have some statistical, historical data that we can go back to and see what the changes have been and, and be able to respond to those. But they also feed into, like I said, the, the budget. What's really, what do the citizens, what really, where do they want us to be spending their money? Um, cause we're gonna have just a limited amount of it. Do we want to be fixing potholes on the streets? Or do we want to be doing something else with it? And so that's really what these questions are aimed to do, is to give us feedback on where we're, where we need to be spending the money. What, what is of the most interest to our, our citizens? Uh, because that's who you represent at the end of the day, is the citizens of West Richland. And you approve the budgets where money gets spent. So we wanna just educate the council, educate staff as we go through that process of budgeting, to make sure we're spending the money where the citizens want us to be.
Eric?
So Eric touched on a little bit. We are starting our budget process for '25, '26. Um, we've been spending time on developing our calendar. Um, we have a draft. I think we've finalized it today or really close to finalizing it. And we are looking at doing a council workshop, um, tentatively looking at April 9th during the day. Um, I'll be working with Stephanie to reach out to all of you, um, to get that on the books. Uh, but I did wanna give you a heads up.
Thank you, Eric. Alrighty. So, uh, it's 8:06 and we have nothing else to discuss, no executive session. Uh, so we will go ahead and adjourn our meeting at 8:06. Thank you, everybody, for coming in this evening. Appreciate it.